Parker.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Bow.
Here.
And in your packet are the meetings from our October 28th committee, the whole meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, we entertain a motion to approve those.
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Marotta, second by trustee Parker.
Marotta, yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yeah.
March.
Yes.
All right, public comment.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Jim Belata from Aqua, just here with James Brooks. Just want a couple of things real quickly. If you hear anybody, there's a main break over kind of by Casey's a little bit. We're on it, we're gonna, we're gonna let it run through, because if we shut it down right now, we're gonna shut people down. So we're gonna valve it tomorrow, we're gonna valves on coming in, we're gonna valve it off, so we don't have to interrupt any services. So somebody says something, hey, there's a leak, we're on it, we know about it, but we're gonna kind of let it go, just in case. It's not gonna get to the point where nobody's gonna be out of water, but if we had to address it right now, today, we'd have to shut people down, and we really don't wanna have to do that, if we can avoid it, so. Just seeing on that. The, the, the new main extension coming in from the east coming to west up to tie for the new water source. It's all state ready to go, it looks like they've been scraping some ground, so probably after next week is when it'll really start digging, you'll see the pipes, the pipes all out there, it's ready to go. So we're working out a couple of things with our local township highway commissioner. He wants some things done, he wants some money, so, to get through some crossings, but that's okay, we're, we understand that. But we're getting through that, and it's ready to go, so that should hopefully move very quickly, depending on weather. Sixty days, you know, hopefully no more than that, maybe seventy-five days, but we need it for this loop study, that you guys are probably well aware of, and James is gonna explain that a little bit too, so. Part of this loop study that the park district has been grateful, working or happy that they're allowing us to put a trailer kind of on their park. It's a place where, and Craig explained it to you guys last time, that's where both water sources are gonna need extra precautionary measure to make sure that this chemical reaction doesn't happen here in Peatone. So James is gonna give just a few minutes and explain how it's going, we're at the loop study, and he's gonna need a little.
I got show and tell as well here, so I'm gonna pass this around. As Jim said, my name is James Brooks, I'm the production manager here. We've been working for the last couple of months to get this mobile lab up and running. The idea is, we've had source water changes all over the country with absolutely no problem whatsoever. What I mean by source water, for example, you guys are on wells now, and we're gonna change that source from wells to surface water. That happens all the time, regularly in water distribution systems, and rarely, almost never, is there an actual problem caused on that situation. Well, recently, we experienced a little bit of one, and we wanna take extra precautions and make sure it doesn't happen here. And just to kind of give you guys an idea of what happened, is I brought a lead service line that we actually harvested from one of the homes here in Peatone, and I think it was 112 Lincoln, does that sound right? I think, I think that's one of the houses we harvested. So this actually came from in front of their house, and on the side, you'll be able to see a really shiny piece of lead where we actually cut it off, and on the inside, you'll see a small coating of brown. And if, depending on which side to look at, you can see a side that actually flaked away. Well, the inside coating is the scale that we talked about, and it's that scale, I'll pass this around so you can look at it. Our water chemistry is actually designed to deposit a little bit of that scale all the time, and we like to be able to maintain that balance, so that as the water flow on that scale is constantly there, it's always there. And what that does is that insulates all the rest of the different pipe materials. We have plastic pipes, concrete pipes, iron pipes, ductile iron pipes, cast iron pipes, there's lead service lines that are no longer allowed, but when they were allowed, people used them. One of the challenges we found in our other community is they actually have copper pipes, but when they soldered them together, before 1984, that solder was allowed to have lead in it. Now, the scale that you see in that pipe is able to insulate that, and that solder in that lead, or even the lead service line itself, never actually touches the water that people drink. And what we wanna make sure is that the new water chemistry doesn't erase that scale, doesn't take that scale away. Even if it does, right now, in one of our other communities, we're in the process of reestablishing that scale. So the pipe loop trailer, the mobile lab is what we're calling it, is gonna run the normal straight Peatone drinking water that you guys have been drinking ever since you've been here, or cankey water, plus about five different types of chemicals in combination with each of those, and so we're gonna get the best results, we're gonna get a set of data for each of those pipes, each of those chemicals, take the best one, apply it to Peatone, and everybody will be happy. I've been living this for the last several months, so I could talk for the next hour. But I would be more than happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Once that scale is established, will it continue to build on the idea of the pipe, or through the chemicals, is that regulated, so it doesn't clog a pipe after a period of time?
Excellent question, and absolutely fantastic scientific application of the process, right? If we continue to add scale at a significant rate, it would in fact block the pipe, and in some places, especially like in dead ends and stuff, and sometimes even in a treatment plant, you'll see that happen. But what we really try and do is, we try and establish the water chemistry, so it's literally only depositing like molecular layers. Like, that's fifty years of deposit, right, that's not two weeks, and so it's really kind of a balancing act to make sure you're not depositing too much. And if we were depositing too much, we're just wasting money on chemicals that we don't need, so it's really in our advantage to not do that, to not over-treat the water.
Is there a requirement or a plan to take out the old lead service lines that you inherited from the village?
So the EPA requires us to have a plan and establish that plan. Obviously, it's, it's financially impossible to literally remove every lead service line at one time, but the answer to your question is yes, we are required to submit that plan, and I forget the date, if it's next year, if it's like 2020 or 2021, but there will be a plan that we have. Whenever we come across them, we have to take them out. One of the challenges that we had here is, we need to be able to find them so we can test them, right? Well, we can't find them and then remove them and test them, so we're working with the EPA hand on hand on how that goes.
And that's not unique to Peatone, that's everywhere.
That's everywhere, that's the entire state, yes, sir.
One nice thing being regulated with the ICC, if we identified a lead service line before, we couldn't do really much of anything about it besides let the resident know about it. Because we didn't own the pipe, the Commerce Commission wouldn't allow us to go in and pull that pipe out or get rid of it, they've become very lax on that. So if we see it and identify it, and we're in there working, and the resident's okay with it, we're gonna pull it out and change it, so. We didn't have that ability to do up until probably about three years ago, but the Commerce Commission is realizing that if companies like us can't do that, who's gonna do it? So they really laxed and haven't pushed back on us replacing lead service lines, even though they're really not on our property, but it's the right thing to do, as you see.
So if you found a run of the lead pipe in front of a resident's home, and it continued on maybe a few more residents down, would you replace all of that, or just in front of that one?
I think the problem that Jim's referring to, and this is really what we come into, let's say I've got my water main running down the street, and I've got a lead service line from that water main to your house. Well, really, there's a B box, right, there's a buffalo box where we can shut that water off, and that's where ownership changes. We own from the main to the shut-off, the homeowner owns from the shut-off to their house. We literally don't have a legal right to on their property and destroy their stuff, even if it is a lead water main and really bad for them. And as Jim said, now they're realizing that the health effects are kind of worth letting us take that lead line out.
If we're digging up a water main and we see that, yes, we'll pull it out, and as long as the homeowner's okay with it, but, you know, really, why wouldn't they be, especially when it's gonna be on Aqua's dime, not their dime, so.
When you pull that lead line from the buffalo box, it comes through the yard, into the sidewalks, and into the basement, and then the meters there? Can you pull that out without damaging sidewalks and yards and everything, is that the way that works?
They have, Cal City Plumbing actually is one of the only companies around here that has one, they have this machine that actually put a wire through, like from the street side, through all the way into the house, and they put a connector on that, and they literally just pull it through, pull the whole thing through with the new, with the new line behind it. So pulling the lead out with pulling that copper through it, you still have to dig a hole in the front yard to get at it.
Right.
But it's, it's much less invasive than.
The hole would be right, like, on the homeowner's side of the buffalo box?
Or basically right where the buffalo box is, yeah, it'll probably be maybe a few feet on each side of it, so. But it's amazing the technology today, these machines, but otherwise, the old ways, you gotta get a little back going and take it all the way up, so, yeah. And sometimes you have to, it kind of lets there. But the equipment's already there, you've got a water main going on, it's not gonna from the grab that little, you know, service line to get it done, so.
But when do you guys find these, you guys are taking them out, you guys are paying for it, take out the homeowner doesn't have to pay for that?
Yeah, we are not advertising that, but yes.
Until now, you're not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is one of those, the ICC hasn't said, yes, okay, you're okay to do this, and we'll allow you to recover those costs, but they're not stopping us either, so. And I know this is on Channel 7 news, so. So it's, it's, they've come a long way.
Okay.
And realizing that.
Are we still looking about a year for the tests, for testing the loop study or whatever?
Chemistry is science, and science is not always specific. We expect after we harvest the lines, we're gonna run just Peatone water through them until they stabilize, until we receive no more test results that indicate there's exposed lead, that would indicate that we've reestablished that scale using the Peatone water. In a perfect world, that would be three days, right, zero days. We took it, we didn't mess anything up, we treated them really carefully, we cut the ends, we didn't break any off, but even on there, you could see that small area that was gone, right? Well, we need to reestablish that on there. Realistically, we expect that to take about three months. After that's done, that's where we're gonna, when we're gonna start adding those five different chemicals that I told you about, and it's gonna be the same thing, so we're gonna be using those and taking our test results, and until our test results really balance out, and we get the right answers, we're not gonna stop. Is that gonna take six months, nine months? We're hoping it takes the shortest time possible, I think nine months is reasonable to expect.
Is the facility all set up, and is it in place, and are you running water through now?
Most difficult question of the night. So, we have been working so very hard, and it's crazy, we had high winds, we've had mud, we had the, the trailer delivery guy blew his truck out. The, the mobile lab is set, the rigs, the pipe rigs, which is what we're calling, which actually have the lead service lines are set up, and we pressurize them today. We've got about a hundred and fifty fittings on each of them, and only one fitting was bad, so we gotta replace that, and it's gonna be done tomorrow. I just got a text from my technician who's leaving there right now, he said if I wanted to go turn the water on right now, I could, probably gonna wait till tomorrow morning, just because it's morning time. But, so the rigs are ready. Now, if you drive out to the site, it still looks like a construction site, because if we were doing some construction. It's our plan to make, of course, clean it up, make it a little bit nicer, and as better weather gets here, right, we're gonna plant grass and make it really nice, the whole thing. We still don't have our electric connection, but I believe the inspection's been done, and we're put on ComEd's timeline.
Is there anything you guys need from us on that, or is it, you got everything you need?
Anything you need from us?
The inspection's been done, as far as I know, that was done Thursday.
Okay.
And so it was my understanding that after the inspection's done, it's the village who puts us in ComEd's schedule, or do we do that?
No, I think you do that.
I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it first and tomorrow.
But if you need any, any help from us or anything, let me know.
Perfect.
Thank you, and the mayor for helping with the park district, it was, they've been great work with.
Good.
Thank you.
We've sent them all the ease-in documents and forms that they've asked for, we haven't actually executed those yet, but based on our meeting, they're okay with us moving forward in the anticipation of getting everything done, and that's all in all the way it stands right now.
I was a little late walking in the door, what's the status of the line coming?
Their shovel will be in the ground after holidays, but it's staked ready to go, they scraped some ground, we're working with the township highway commissioner on a couple access points, but we're ready to go.
Good.
Pipe's out there, yes, the backhoe should be ready to go after holiday.
You're talking about the leak by Casey's, do you know what, what that was, what happened?
Nah, I don't know, Brian O'Keefe, just as I was walking out the door, he said, hey, you're going to Peatone, let him know there's a break, we know about it, we're gonna valve it tomorrow, because if I went to fix it today, I have no way to shut it down, I'd have to shut people down. So he's gonna isolate it tomorrow, put a valve in there, and that way he doesn't disrupt any services, everybody else. So if somebody says something, there's water leaking, we're on it, we know about it, so. It'll be, it'll be done tomorrow. So I was driving by, and I saw these, this bad accident, and there's a lot of cars everywhere, I was like, oh my, I thought it was a little water main leak, and I realized it was just an accident.
Anything else?
Are you leaving this as, or are you taking us back?
I can leave it here if you guys wanna use it to, to, as a visual aid for others who have questions, or I can, I can take it, I don't want it thrown away.
No, that one I'll throw away.
Well, hang on.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
You bet.
I don't need to be rude, but I need to be somewhere.
No, no problem, thank you very much, no, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board members?
I don't know, since we have time, do you wanna, thinking my AOC committee report?
Sure.
So, we talked a little bit more about the police pension, as most of you are aware, the state legislature did pass the pension consolidation bill, which eventually will mean that our pension funds will be invested with all the other downstate pension funds, and allow us to take advantage of, you know, more money being invested, and, you know, probably be able to get a better, well, we will be able to get a better investment rate than we are with just a small amount that we have. So that's the good news, the bad news is they really didn't, it's really kind of up in the air whether they're gonna allow us to be able to tax over our cap to be able to fund that. It sounds like it's, they're not going to. So that means that going forward, you know, we're gonna have to contribute what the actuary says we have to contribute. And so that means that, you know, we may have to cut our other parts of the budget, so that we'll be able to cover that. So, just so that's on everybody's radar, that, you know, that's gonna happen now. We've been not funding at a, at the full level for quite a few years, there's kind of a, what do you call it, a shortfall of a little over eight hundred thousand that's happened over the years. And our upcoming request for next year is somewhere around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, the committee talked about that we really would like to, you know, possibly put in a lump sum of what we've had a shortfall over the year, so whatever that number is, eight hundred thousand something. And then possibly get that done this year, and then, you know, work on how we're gonna fully fund our next year's contribution. The good news is that we do a lump sum, that our annual contribution should drop a little bit, we're hoping, especially if we, you know, start to get a little better investment return. I doubt if the, you know, this consolidation's probably not gonna happen, you know, you know, for another twelve months.
I was gonna say, it's gonna take about a year, I think, to.
Yeah, so, but, I think we, it's so that, I think the threshold where our pension board can invest in more securities, I believe is two and a half million, right? Like, we're at a million and a half?
One point, oh, one point four.
Yeah, so, I think if we, you know, put in a lump sum like we talked about, and then, you know, with next year's contributions, I think we should be at that threshold, so, you know, we can start getting better returns immediately, and then even with, we should even get a little better returns when we get consolidated with everybody else. So, our thought was to take what the shortfall amount out of, you know, the sale of the water sewer system. And, but we really would like to, you know, going forward, we'd really like to not tap into that to make this contribution. So, you know, before, you know, the development on the highway kicks in, and hopefully we'll get some more revenue from that, there's kind of probably gonna be a couple of years before that happens, we've gotta come up with either another revenue source, or more probably, we're gonna have to turn back the budget. So, is that about covered, guys?
Probably a combination of all three.
Yeah. Which, I mean, and it makes sense, and I do like the idea of getting that unfunded amount, you know, caught up this year, before the end of the year, and then deal with the pension's contributions as we go through the budget process. So, I mean, to do that, it's gonna take an appropriations ordinance, you know, we're gonna have to appropriate that money, and, I mean, it's the consensus of the board, I think we can move forward with that, and then bring that back to the board, you know, at the first meeting in December. Because we're probably only gonna have one meeting in December, so typically that second meeting, we don't have, because it runs right into the Christmas holiday, so. If that's the consensus of the board, we can get that working and get it brought back to the board at that first meeting in December.
Yeah, so that, so if we do make a lump sum payment this year, that's, from what I understand, that's really not, that's not gonna affect the amount that we're required to put in next year, because it always.
Correct, that's ours, then.
Yeah, so we won't, you know, hopefully then in, you know, twenty twenty-one, we'll see, hopefully a lower amount for that lead.
Correct.
But.
How much money are we currently generating from just saying all the water, is there our messes?
Well, I mean, just kind of a rough, you know, two percent on twelve million dollars, you know, probably two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. And, but, you know, a couple of things are gonna happen, I mean, we're gonna be investing, you know, one point six or seven million of that into the land out on the highway. And then, you know, we put another, if we do this, eight hundred thousand or so, so, I mean, you're looking at, it'll probably be a little less, it won't be around ten billion, we'll probably have.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Now, are, are we volunteering to join this group, or is every?
No, it's, it's.
Every village and town.
It's legislated, yeah, that's.
And what's gonna happen to the villages that just don't have a budget to afford it?
I don't know if that question has been answered yet.
Because you can't get blood out of a tourniquet.
No. So I don't.
Well, I mean, if you don't, if you don't fund it, then they can go, the state can go after.
Your sales tax revenue, they just won't give it back to you, is one way that they can.
But, yeah, they're gonna be, you know, drastic cuts that people have to make, probably unless they put some, you know, something in place where we can, you know, tax to cover that.
I'm just looking at the big picture, you go across the state of Illinois, and how many little towns there are.
Right, I, I've got another consolidation topic to talk about when we're done talking about this. Consolidation is, it's good, but it can also be painful.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, maybe this, they will create a mechanism down the line, we don't know, they just didn't put that in this, around the legislation.
So I guess, like you said, with, you know, let's go ahead with this lump sum payment this year, but then, you know, everybody, we gotta think about it, you know, the budget process is gonna be, is gonna be starting here before we know it, and we're gonna have to run pretty lean, you know, for a couple of years until, you know, hopefully we get revenue sources out the highway, we start get that going. But it's not gonna be a whole lot of fat in the budget going forward.
Yeah, because the salaries are fixed, they're all under contract, and so it's really discretionary spending, which is roads and trees and.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, and all those programs we've been doing over the years to reinvest in the town, so it might be a one or two year lean period until the revenues kick back in, unless they give us a funding mechanism to begin tax. Just trying to, you know, it sounds dire, but I think we're just trying to get everybody prepared.
Yep.
There's a difficult discussion both on the village side, but then also on the resident side also.
Sure.
We talked about looking into, you know, if there are any assets available that just aren't being used, liquidating something like that, but from the conversation we had, it didn't sound like, you know, maybe a couple lots here, here and there in town, but they're not of any substantial value
Right.
to shore up any large portion of that. But, I think that was kind of my, I wanna see just a overall, you know, explore all areas as opposed to just one lump sum from, from the sale.
I agree, I agree.
How quickly will we be getting into the higher revenue returns on the pension?
Well, if we, like I said, if we don't, I assume after we make the lump sum payment and then make next year's payment, which I'm not sure when that happens, you know, when that goes in the police pension fund?
The five seventy-three?
Yeah, our annual contribution.
It'd be after the start of the next budget year.
Right.
So I would imagine like next summer, that, that we reach that two and a half million threshold, and then the pension board can, you know, then start to invest in, you know, more securities, which would, you know, theoretically.
Generate a higher rate.
Generate a higher rate of return.
And we've got our own pension board, it's not a state board that controls all the monies for everybody.
Right, so we currently have our own pension board, and they're the ones that do the investing.
Yeah.
With, you know, whatever investment people that they work with, once this consolidation goes into effect, then they're gonna be making basically the decisions as far as the investments.
Right, so the state pension board will be making the investment decisions. We'll, we'll still have a local pension board that will deal with, you know, you know.
The benefits.
The benefits, who's in, who's out, you know, that kind of thing, and, but they won't have, I don't think, any say in, you know, what's being invested, or, you know, what's being invested.
Can we trust them?
Well, I mean, they're, they're kind of pointing to, you know, they're showing, they're saying, well, look how well the IMRF is done, you know, and, you know, and any, anytime you're talking about investing a billion dollars instead of a million dollars, you know, you, you gotta get a better.
Oh, yeah.
return, but, yeah, I mean, that's all, you're giving up local control, yeah, there's no, there's no way around it, so, but, you know.
I think in the long run, it's, it is a, it is a good.
It is a good, yeah.
It is a very good thing.
But, the other thing we talked about at our meeting was updating the employee manual, the lore we went through, and, you know, changing a few things with that manual having been updated in, I don't know, like seventeen or nineteen years, something like that, so. We are, we got copies of it, there was quite a few changes, so we didn't feel right just bringing it to the board just yet, so we're gonna, you know, spend some time reviewing that, and hopefully after the next meeting, we'll bring it to the board, so you guys can look at it and improve that.
Just, if I could just add one more thing about the pension board at the state level, maybe if this makes you feel any better, like, they did, there was a lot of back and forth with the negotiations about who would be on that board, so there should be a representative, a group of people, so there's labor and different representatives on that board, so. It, it kind of stalled it out a little bit in, in veto session, so, there's, should be local representation, labor, and municipal representation on there, so, that, that was a concern.
One of the things that always concerns me, any kind of large sum of money and, and boards involved, and they start stacking these layers of administration in there, and that can eat into the, you know, monies that are made, you know, because the government always seems to have plenty of people doing the, the work, yep.
Their contention is that this is gonna take away some of those layers, because each board around the state has their own actuary or their accountants, their own lawyers, and they're gonna take away all those for each local board, and only have one, one actuary or one lawyer.
Because those fees are all paid from, you know, through the pension.
So you'll, you'll kind of take away some of that excess and save money that way.
Anything else from the AOC?
I think so, personnel manual and the.
Were there any other committees? I went to an interesting meeting Thursday night. We had our Leraway communication meeting, the, the G thirty-two. So talk about consolidation, you know, we went from EastCom, which we were with for many years, and the state, a couple of years ago, if you remember, mandated that all of these PSAP centers consolidate. So this G thirty-two was formed, it was EastCom, Leraway, or Lincolnway, and the Will County Sheriff. So when this all comes together, then of course you're bringing a lot of different thoughts, so different ways of doing things, different personalities together into a big group. So it's really been an, an interesting dynamic as this thing is, is growing. And there have been, you know, some growing pains. So what they were trying to do just now is update the bylaws. So there were a few bylaws that they were trying to pass that really, I had some problems with, and we had had a, a meeting with us, Crete, Beecher, and Mooney, the mayor's administrators, sat down week before last, talking about this. So anyway, one of the, one of the bylaws that they were inputting was a, a penalty if you decided to withdraw from Lincolnway. So it says, the bylaw says, the withdrawing members share, at the time of withdrawal, the outstanding balance of additional construction cost for the LLC paid by Will County. Such payment is due in full on the effective date of withdrawal. As a matter of record, this expense is in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Will be amateurized interest-free over twenty years, with the first payment due and payable to Will County with the opening of the center. So basically, what all that means is, we would have, if we walk in the door and say, we're moving, we're withdrawing, it would cost us about forty-five thousand dollars to leave. So that was never in the bylaws previously, and the way this was worded just really wasn't very clear, I guess. There was a lot of murkiness to it. So one of, this bylaw was pulled, they did not pass this bylaw on Thursday night. And another bylaw that was not pulled was in regards to how much basically our rate could go up. And the original bylaws, it basically gave, guaranteed us a maximum of five percent raise. Well, when they redid, actually a motion got passed the meeting before last, and they enabled them to raise the budget by a hundred and five percent, but it doesn't necessarily make it, make us only go up five percent. I think, and the numbers that they ran, we were going up about twenty-two percent, was that right? So, one of the things that a bunch, I'd say, I think nine different communities and fire districts, I think, submitted a letter. Yeah, yeah, so it was Mooney Fire, Crete Fire, Crete Police and Fire, Beecher Fire, it was Mooney, the Village of Mooney, Mooney Police, submitted a letter, and I, I also submitted a letter on behalf of the Village of Piattone, just was as an intent, as an intent to withdraw. And the idea behind that was to, if we have that intent to withdraw and before that bylaw is passed, it would not apply to us. We don't intend to withdraw, but the other thought was, talking with Mooney and Beecher and Crete, we need to get in the ear of the legislators downstate and say that, you know, this consolidation may not be the best thing, you know, for dispatch. And is there a possibility, you know, that they would reconsider consolidation? Would we have the ability at some point down the road to maybe go to a smaller center? Because what's happening is, you've got thirty-two entities in this dispatch center, and when you mix police and fire, as always, I mean, fire is going, police is gonna have the bulk of the calls. There are about eighty-five percent of the calls in the center, where the fire is fifteen. But a fire call is much longer and much more complicated than a police call. A lot of the police calls are handled, handled over the computer, or not necessarily a lot of radio traffic. Where fire calls, you have a lot of radio traffic, you have a lot of mutual aid, you have a lot of moving parts. And that's one of the concerns of a lot of the fire districts, is that this center does not meet the NFPA standard that a dispatch center should meet at this point in time. There's a couple of reasons for that, and one of them is the redundancy of the electric coming into the building. You're supposed to have two different sources, where if one goes down, you have another source coming in. The whole center went down on July the fourth this year, they went black for a little while. So that, you know, that created a little bit of an issue. So they're working on that right now with Con Ed, but there's a lot of things going on, and they're, and they're short-staffed right now also. There are about ten dispatchers down, I believe. Once, they've got eight in training, and once those eight are out of training, they're still ten down. So just to give you guys, you know, just an update of, of what's going on there. I talked with Chief Mort, he does not have any issue with the quality of services that we're receiving as a police department. That's not an issue, but I think it's just a big picture issue that there, there's a lot of things that need to be taken care of. And if we, as a group of communities, especially on the east side, you know, put our voices together, they're gonna get heard a little bit more, so.
If you pull out, we're.
You can't, and that's really.
What are the options?
We, we don't have an option, yeah. Right now, and that's one of the things, that's why we're trying to get in the ear of the legislators downstate, you know, saying, you know, maybe we do need to have the ability, you know, to have that option. Right now, we don't. Some of the fire districts, you know, they're looking at, they could look at Westcom, they could look at Orland. I mean, they have the ability to go a different direction, where we as a police entity do not.
Would it be a lot less costly?
For them?
For us.
For us to go some, I didn't, I don't know, because there really isn't a place to go. We are paying more now than we paid with EastCom.
That I'm not sure, I mean, I, I know what we're paying now, I don't know what we're.
I believe it's, I believe it's a little more than it was with EastCom. But EastCom had its issues too, but, I mean, EastCom was in a very small center, and one of the things that the communities that were in EastCom did every year was, you know, contribute money to the building of a new building in the future. So when we, when EastCom disbanded, we got, you know, some money back, you know, when that disbanded, but, you know, the, the size of the facility, I don't think is the issue here in Will County. It's just getting the proper setup, you know, the proper equipment and getting the, the whole system, you know, worked out.
Was the EastCom disbanded because of this consolidation?
Yes, yes. EastCom was forced to disband, consolidate. We were basically told who we had to consolidate with. So it's, it was EastCom, Lincolnway, Will County Sheriff, Romeoville, and Custer Park is now in the G thirty-two also.
And that's part of Will County Sheriff?
Yes.
The thirty-two?
Correct, the Will County Sheriff is part of the thirty-two. They're dispatched out of the same center.
Why are they down to ten people?
They've had just an issue of getting people, this is all, Will County is basically in control of the employment of the people, they're all Will County employees, so that's.
Don't get disgruntled and don't wanna be there.
Right.
It's a hard job to keep.
It is.
And how do they account for not providing the, the secondary backup and all that? On a facility that size and having to meet all these government requirements?
Well, when this was, when this was all going in, and when they, the center first opened, Brad Veerman was the executive director, and he died suddenly. So that really kind of threw a wrench into a lot of the moving parts, because a lot of the things I've been told were in Brad's head, they weren't necessarily on paper. So when he passed away, you know, there was a lot of scrambling going on. And Denise, who is now the director, that was in there trying to pick up the pieces and keeping things moving forward, so. Now, we're not gonna go anywhere, we can't go anywhere, but I just wanted to give the board an update of what was happening.
So is that, what, is there, is there enough votes there to stop anything that's?
There were, there were plenty of votes to, you know, stop these bylaws, to put them on hold, to take a look at them, and try to get them rewarded, to bring them back.
So any of the sources, you said that's nine entities?
Yeah, it was, we have, over on this side, we have Crete Police and Fire, Piattone Police and Fire, Beecher Police and Fire, Mooney Police and Fire, University Park Police and Fire, so that's ten. But there were quite a few other departments, you know, Frankfurt Fire, Mokina Fire, you know, were, had the same concerns.
How about Manhattan?
Manhattan, I'm trying to think, I know the village was, the, the mayor of Manhattan is one of the executive board members, so he was one of the people who were bringing the bylaws forward, so they were in favor of the bylaws. I think Manhattan Fire might have been on the other side, if I remember correctly.
They can like separate, have the police dispatch separated from the fire dispatch.
Well, I mean, to me, that would make, to me, that would make the most sense, you know, to have strictly fire dispatchers and strictly police dispatchers. That's not how it's being done, that's not how a lot of centers do it, that mixed police and fire. One day you might be doing fire, one day you might be doing police, is the way I understand it.
That would be very confusing.
Yeah, there's, and there's, every fire district does things differently. I mean, you know, police probably a little more even, you know, same, but, you know, definitely when you get into fire districts, there's a lot of different ways of doing things.
That all just boils down to Leraway and who's running the dispatch center.
Correct.
They have to just figure that out.
Correct. And anything else for the committee at the whole?
Sorry, did we ever set a date for public works?
December sixth, at nine o'clock.
It, it is, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's Friday.
Yeah, okay.
And we're gonna meet here?
We'll meet here.
And then we can go.
And then we can go take a tour of the facility after, if you have time or if you want to.
Okay.
And anybody else is welcome to see it if you want to too.
I have one thing.
Yes.
It's been twice, there's been a pizza food truck outside of the Legion. I don't think that's good. I mean, we've got restaurants paying real estate taxes and insurance and employees and for them just to come and camp out and cannibalize our businesses? Not to mention the fact that they've got a generator running on the base, has there been any complaints? I mean, it sounds like.
I wasn't even aware it was there.
Yeah, it's been there twice, they must plug into Legion.
I think they do it for the Queen of Hearts thing or something, they do it for some thing that's like one night.
Friday night, they're from Grand Park.
I don't, I don't, I just saw it, I'm like advertised on the Legion thing.
Licensing for food trucks?
We don't.
I asked if they had a permit to do that, they said, oh yeah, gotta get in on this.
Well, they, they're, Will County, they, they have to go through the Will County Health Department.
But can they just come any time they want then, and set up a little permit?
They could get a permit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we, the one thing we can do, like you said, is create some kind of a permit for that. I mean, I think a lot of communities do have food trucks, you know, come in for special events, so.
I could see if it was an event.
Right.
But just to camp out on a Friday night at the peak pizza ordering hours? If I was in the pizza business, I would be going nuts. I mean, it's just like, come in, take their business and.
And I'm sure, and I'm just on the, I'm just talking on the other side, I'm sure that Legion's looking at it as they're trying to bring people into the Legion.
I don't think it's on the Queen of Hearts night.
No.
No, it was for something though, they had something going on, some benefit or something, and they had that brought in. That's what I kind of saw on the Facebook page.
Cause they've been there twice, at least twice that I'm aware of, and.
Yeah, it was for some.
It's loud, I mean, it's like if you started up a tractor, I mean, that's what, I'm surprised there hasn't been any complaints.
Well, are we getting the sales tax off of that?
Pardon me?
Are we giving the sales tax, tax off of the sales?
And I mean, one reason why we want to get.
We don't know who they are.
We don't, right, we, we have no idea who they are, one reason we would wanna get, another reason we'd wanna get a permit is to make sure that they have their Will County Health Department approval and contact Legion, just so.
But outside of an event, do we want people to come in and, and do that, you know? I can see if it's an event and vendors come in, but just to randomly be able to come in and absorb some of our business without absorbing any expenses.
But Chicago faces this a lot, and it's all about making.
But they got five million people, you know, we've got a pretty small market here.
Yeah, no, I'm saying that, but you have to make it fair for the existing businesses to be against the food trucks. And I think there's ways to do that, I mean, the food trucks can't just come in and set shop. I think we, we've discovered we have to create some licensing and some permitting and some fees and some charges to allow them to do that. But I, you know, I also think that there's a compelling argument that's, you know, these food trucks come in and they bring different foods that you can't get here in town, that's how they compete.
I think it's specifically pizza.
This particular one, I'm just saying, food trucks are very popular.
Oh yeah.
Many places, and I'm not saying that we should just dismiss food trucks, but I think we should regulate and permit and make it fair for our existing restaurants.
I, I agree.
Not a good place to do that.
Anything else from the committee at the whole?
Christmas in the Village, is there anything we need to talk about?
The schedule, the schedule's out, the schedule's up on Facebook, and we've got schedules, you know, around town where people can pick them up, it's on the Village website also. Saturday, December fourteenth, second Saturday of the month, starts at eight AM. Full day of things going on throughout the community, a lot of family-friendly fun things going on. Reindeer, that's new this year, we're gonna have a couple reindeer downtown in the afternoon, where you can come in, bring your camera, get your picture taken with the reindeer. A lot of the same, you know, face painting, balloon twirling, the super popular, it'll be back downtown again. Ice sculptures, free wagon rides, the craft show, pancake breakfast at the high school in the morning. Parade at five o'clock, the lighted parade, yeah.
I like to do one, the giveaways.
Yes, we have, we have giveaways, and we got a, we have a new giveaway this year that we, we're not disclosing.
Show off.
Yeah.
Did you, did you order warm weather, or did you order a snowstorm?
No, I, I ordered, I ordered about forty-two degrees, no snow, it starts snowing afterwards. Don't it too warm though? Because the first, the first year, we melted the ice sculptures before they were done, so. They were melting as you were sculpting them.
They were sculpting water.
That was really warm that year.
The Chamber of Commerce had a guest speaker come in that does surveys about communities and how people feel about different things, and we scored like the highest on community, family activities, and the people liked them, it was really impressive, good numbers, so.
When did they have that done, Mike?
They were in, it was last Wednesday was the meeting, and they brought the results, and then they've been doing it for a couple of weeks before, random surveys with people and businesses.
A lot of the businesses throughout the community have something going on that day too, so. So I encourage everybody to take a look at the schedule and get out and enjoy everything.
There's some on the counter up there and.
Appreciate all the people that acted as sponsors and.
Yeah, and there's donation boxes around. Yeah, and there's donation boxes around town too.
Yes.
People can donate for, that's a.
Helping hands and adoptive soldier, yeah.
Um, a lot of business around town. You wanna bring some, you know, non-purchaseable items to donate. They've been going around and collecting and it's collecting, so.
Personal products, there's a, there's a whole list. That's on the, I think, the Village website also and it's on Facebook, the Village Facebook page also.
And then there's all ten representatives in Will County. They're collecting like coats and sweatpants and sweatshirts. Jelly use are new and they have a box in our lobby.
And then speaking of the chamber, a week from Thursday is the holiday party, so. Sure, everybody's, I don't know if you guys got invitation, if you're invited, uh, it's at Drow's this year.
Pretty good.
It's five to eight. I found my invitation.
You did.
Anything else? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Ab, yes. Jones.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Maradale.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we will re-adjourn or reconvene at seven o'clock.